Welcome everyone to the June 29th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everybody around the table and in the room, people at home. Our first item on our agenda today is Envision Eugene. We're talking about single-family housing. And just to remind folks that are listening, Envision Eugene has brought people together from across the community, across all kinds of political persuasions, to work together for the future of our community. Appreciate everyone who's here and all the hard work you've done. Turn it over to the City Manager now.
Thank you Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Lisa. Perhaps Lisa, you can introduce the people at the table.
I'm going to turn it over to Carolyn. Good afternoon. I'm Lisa Gardner, Planning Director. With me today on staff are Carolyn Weiss, Heather O'Donnell, and Jason Dedrick. And also with us are members of our Community Resource Group, who have been working for the last several months very diligently as part of the Technical Resource Group. So we have Sue Pritchard, Sean Bowles, Mia Nelson, and Rick Duncan, who specifically were working on the Partially Vacant Land Committee. So this afternoon, we're going to give you, staff are going to give you a presentation, provide some context and a brief overview on some of the housing mix issues and land need. And then we're going to turn it over to the committee members to talk to you more specifically about the very detailed, very arduous, rigorous process that they've been going through, and open it up for questions and discussion. So Jason, if you could, there we go. So the process overview we're going to give you today, specifically, we're going to spend some time talking about housing, how we got to where we are today, looking at housing mix, and all the various factors that go into that, including the work of the Technical Resource Group. We're specifically going to spend time on the single-family housing need, which, as you recall from our last conversation, is where we're heading towards, landing on a mix, and figuring out what our need is, and then our next steps. So this is really just a graphic to set the context. If you look at the beginning, on the left, the community visioning, that's the work that we are doing with the Community Resource Group, started well over a year ago. That followed the ECLAP process, the Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment. We spent many, many hours in listening sessions and working through that process, and developing the set of values and the framework for the pillars document, which we released at your direction almost four months ago in March. Have been receiving public input on that. And then in the meantime, we've been doing the strategy refinement. And that's really where the work of the Technical Resource Group comes in. Staff have been working to support them, and it's been hard keeping up because of the number of hours and really good work that these folks represent. And then obviously, moving forward, we'll come back to you at various times, talking about how we put together our package and our specific proposals for the formal adoption process. That's sort of coming this fall. So I think, here, let me talk just a little bit about the pillars, reminding you that the pillars really are the foundation for the planning framework. It's about encompassing all the values that came out of our Community Resource Group that really reflect what we've heard from our community in terms of what's important here. So things like economic opportunity, affordable housing, the livability issue obviously is really important in our community, economic development, as I mentioned, is important. And then I think perhaps the most important of all those pillars is one that we will continue to talk about, which is providing adaptable, flexible, and collaborative implementation process. And that's really giving ourselves the ability, so while we're trying to, we're not really coming up with a 20-year plan, although we're required to, our goal is not to know exactly what's going to happen over the next 20 years, but it's to come up with a plan that reflects the values, and that we have an opportunity to revisit as needed, as we see more about what's happening on the ground in terms of demographics and market trends. So I think that pillar is going to continue to surface as one that's very critical as we move forward in the plan. So I think at this point Heather is going to talk a little bit about the housing process.
So as you know, the focus of this meeting is really to focus on single-family housing. But just as a reminder, we have a multifamily housing need, and through the development of our Envision Eugene pillars document, we've identified a recommendation that all of our multifamily housing need be addressed inside the urban growth, existing urban growth boundary. So we wouldn't be expanding for multifamily housing. And the strategies associated with accommodating multifamily housing inside the urban growth boundary are focusing that type of housing along our corridors, our core transit corridors, our key core commercial areas, and through our Opportunity Siting Program. As far as single-family housing goes, as you know, the Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment, which included our buildable lands inventory, gave us an estimated single-family housing land need, and that was based on if historic or past trends continued, what our single-family housing land need would be. We've since then worked with the Community Resource Group and had public involvement that helped shape community values and visioning. And then, as Lisa mentioned, most recently been working with the Technical Resource Group, who's been going back to the assumptions made in the ECLAP, Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment, and looking at the data, the assumptions that were made, with the idea of looking at some of those, comparing the assumptions made with some of the visioning values and actual future trends that might change some of those assumptions. So this is a graphic that you're going to see throughout the presentation, that's really compiled to put together what are all the different parts that make up our single-family housing need. So we have a future demand that becomes the number of single-family homes we need, and then how much of those homes can fit inside our urban growth boundary? What is the capacity in our urban growth boundary? And the components of that are what can fit on our vacant land, how much are we assuming on our partially vacant land, what kind of additional efficiency strategies, and we'll talk more about that, can we do to get more single-family housing inside the existing urban growth boundary? And then finally, are there any options for our re-designating land inside the urban growth boundary to low-density residential, which is where we see the most single-family So the three major components that put together to come up with the number of single-family homes we need are our population growth projections, demographics and trends, and housing mix. Our population projection for the next 20 years is about 34,000 more people. That's based on the adopted projection that was put out by PSU, and it was adopted by Lane County. We know that there is a new census coming out. It should be released in July, I believe, the 2010 census. But our population projection is really based on Lane County's adopted forecast. So the new census doesn't really have an effect on our population projection. And then based on that projection, we know that we need about 15,000 additional dwelling units or homes, and that's total. So we're talking about single-family and multifamily in that number. So another element, and we've talked a lot about this here, another element that we look at when we're talking about what number of single-family homes that we'll need in the future is, have we been planning, has our existing housing stock been providing enough housing for all income levels? So you've heard this before, we've done analysis about that. We know we have a deficit or a need for homes for lower and some moderate income levels. We know that 45% of Eugene's households were cost burdened in 2008. And what cost burden means is that folks are paying more, 45% of Eugene's households are paying more than the recommended amount on housing costs, which means they have less money for their daily needs, and in some cases, in many cases, are having trouble making ends meet. And then finally, we know that the cost of housing compared to household income has increased from housing costing three times that of income in '98 to six times that of income in 2008. We also look at demographic factors, and what those factors might play in the type of housing we need in the future. So some key ones are that Eugene has a larger share of college-aged people than Lane County as a whole. Eugene's population is growing older. Eugene's household size is generally smaller than other households across the street, and has been decreasing over time. And Eugene is becoming more ethnically diverse. We're seeing an increase in Latino and Asian populations. And then trends in building. How do those affect what types of housing we need for the future? Housing starts have been dominated by single-family types. That's probably not a surprise. And that's overall. There's obviously certain areas in the city that have seen more multifamily housing starts. And then, as we talked about, housing has become less affordable for renting and owning. So housing mix is really what takes all those factors we just talked about, affordability, demographics, trends, population projections, and housing need, and puts it together. It pulls all these factors together to help you plan for what mix your future housing should be planned for, what mix of single-family detached versus multifamily. And again, we're talking about multifamily. In this context, we're talking about anything from row houses to garden apartments to condos and apartment buildings. We also know that we have an affordable housing pillar that is part of the recommended Envision Eugene draft proposal. And that pillar talks about providing more multifamily housing than we've seen in the past. So what could that mean? Our current housing mix is 61% single-family, 39% multifamily. Work that we've done with Echo Northwest, our consultant, about a year ago in July 2010, resulted in a preliminary recommendation from them of seeing a shift of more multifamily than we've seen in the past, so 55% single-family to 45% multifamily. And then housing mixed subgroup, they're a subgroup of the Community Resource Group. They did some work on this issue, and their recommendation resulted in a range that they thought the mix should be somewhere between 60% single-family, 40% multifamily, and 55% single-family, 45% multifamily. So at this point, you know, I should just clarify, we're not asking, we're not making a recommendation at this meeting, we're not asking for the council to land on a housing mix at this meeting. But just kind of want to give you some background there. So some of the key issues that we've heard questions about are, how do the number of single-family homes and just housing in general, how are students addressed in that? How are foreclosures addressed in those calculations? How are regional impacts addressed? Those are some of the key things that we've heard people asking questions about. So we thought we'd just bring those right up front. University students are accounted for in the PSU population projections because they're part of the US Census. They also are accounted for in our housing demand. Our housing demand and the supply that we'll ultimately need looks at the number of dorms that we'll need, and then also the amount of multifamily we'll need. There's been a lot of comments about the high foreclosure rates that we have right now, over the past recent years. And the question is, how does our demand and supply account for that? Well, it's accounted for the best that we can at this point, is through our vacancy rate. So our demand assumes, our demand projection assumes that some part of our demand is actually for vacant homes. We have a supply of vacant homes, we always have about a 5% supply of vacant homes, and so our vacancy rate is built into our demand, and we assume that we need to continue some supply of vacant homes in the future, allows for that turnover to happen. And then regional impacts. There have been a lot of discussions at the Community Resource Group, even at the TRG, the Technical Resource Group, about how does our planning for Eugene's urban growth boundary affect outlying communities and vice versa? The state requirements are for us to plan for Eugene's urban growth boundary. We can't plan for Coburg's urban growth boundary, or Junction City's urban growth boundary. But there's a lot of concern about what we do inside our urban growth boundary, and how certain kinds of demand, for example, maybe single-family demand, might get pushed out to outlying communities that might not have otherwise if we planned differently. And what would be the impacts if something like that happened? Do transportation costs increase because you've got more people traveling further out to, between home and work? Same with VMTs, vehicle miles traveled. Do those increase because you have folks traveling further out between home and work? And to what extent does that really happen? So there's been a couple of things talked about, figuring out a way to better monitor the impacts that we may or may not have on outlying communities, or just at least monitoring what's going on in the outlying communities, and seeing if we can make a connection. And we've also talked a little bit, the Technical Resource Group has looked at this, and members of the Community Resource Group, there are different indexes out there where you can start to measure the impacts of planning for housing in one location, and then what happens to your transportation costs in another location. So those are kind of implementation measures and monitoring measures that we're going to be looking at in the future. So now I'm going to pass it to Jason, who's really going to start talking about, okay, well, with that demand, what happens when we apply that demand inside the urban growth boundary? How much capacity do we have?
So the first piece I'm going to talk about, I'm going to talk about actually the left two boxes down there, vacant land and partially vacant land. So our vacant land was addressed during the ECLAP process as part of the buildable lands inventory. And as you recall, we took every tax lot in the city and basically assigned it to one of these four categories. And these categories, again, accounted for everything, and the pieces that were left over essentially are vacant lands, those that have less than $1,000 of improvement on them. Those lands were then assigned a density based on the densities that we've been achieving recently in terms of dwelling units per acre. That allowed us to establish what the capacity was of our vacant lands, or how much could we supply, how many dwelling units, homes could we supply on our vacant lands? Those lands were arrayed around the city. This map shows all of our vacant land, so there's, you know, all types are in here. But our, most of our residential vacancy was down around the south part of town, and then kind of sprinkled, all these little green boxes sprinkled throughout the city, but not necessarily in the core, but more towards the edges are where our vacant residential lands are at. So when we were assuming what to do with our vacant lands, the state does require us to assume, and all cities to assume, that all of your vacant lands will develop over the 20-year period. So that was a state requirement. But it's also a critical part of our pillars and our values as a community that came out last year with the Community Resource Group. First off, that this considers the importance of our Compact Urban Development pillar. It says, "We'll use the land that we have inside the UGB as efficiently as we can before we look for lands outside." So assuming all those lands will develop is part of that. But it also considers our Neighborhood Livability pillar, because not only does it say we're going to assume that all those lands will develop, but it doesn't assign a higher level of density than what we've seen. So it just maintains the amount that we have seen. And that considers the fact that we've heard a lot from our neighborhoods and from our community about not densifying to an extreme extent in our existing neighborhoods. So there are also things that we needed to consider that would constrain development on our vacant lands. And primarily, those were things protected in our code currently. Protected waterways, FEMA floodways, water quality streams were already removed from our vacant land and can't be considered as part of our supply. There's been a lot of discussion about what we have currently, what we're noting currently as unprotected swales and drainages throughout the city, but primarily in the River Road-Santa Clara neighborhood. And these are areas that are an important part of stormwater function, but they're also an important part of livability for these neighborhoods. And so what, while we recognize the importance of this, unfortunately, state law does not allow us to assume that these areas can't be developed if they aren't protected in our code, which they aren't currently. So the Technical Resource Group spent time talking about this issue at a couple of meetings, and noted that from a livability standpoint, we currently have a process for area planning, starting in the River Road-Santa Clara neighborhood, that would allow the ability for these neighborhoods to start mapping these areas. One of the limitations is there are a lot of different definitions out there of what a swale is, what a drainage way is. My swale could be your drainage way, could be someone else's creek or stream. Makes it very difficult to map because there's no shared definition. So instead of having staff do that, instead have it be a neighborhood-driven process to define what is of value to the neighborhood, and then move forward from there. So the TRG recommended having that process address this issue of swales and drainage ways. There's also an additional effort that will be coming in the next couple of years, where we will be required to meet new stormwater regulations from the state, which could also have an impact on these swales and drainage ways. So those two things together kind of speak to how and when these should happen. But I want to touch on the last piece there, which is the Implementation pillar, that talks about the fact that although this process would likely not be completed prior to adopting our own urban growth boundary, our Implementation pillar says that we will constantly monitor what's going on, and also adjust for any new policies that may occur at any time in the next 20 years. So if, to some extent, these currently unprotected swales or drainage ways are protected, they then could be removed from our buildable land supply, and we would have to account accordingly for those. So I want to also talk quickly about partially vacant land. And first, just want to start with a definition of that. I guess partially vacant, it's a state term, it's not necessarily completely intuitive. What it means is essentially all of our developed land. If you think about your developed land supply, there's some capacity remaining on that. A good example is a three-acre lot that has a small home in one corner of the lot. You could anticipate there may be a possibility for additional homes somewhere on that lot sometime in the future. Those lands are our partially vacant lands. So we've had a subcommittee of the Technical Resource Group working on those lands. Their charge was to first develop an inventory of these lands. Where are they? How much of them do we have? Next was to consider, what would the rate of development be on these lots? What could we expect might happen in the future? How might that compare to what's happened in the past? And then also, what would be the density that would be assumed on these lots? They have met, I think, eight or nine times for at least two and a half hours each time. They've spent a tremendous amount of time on this weekly for the last several months. They have talked about a ton of different issues, such as, what's the past rate of infill been on these lands? Where are these lands located? What's the improvement value on these lands? How does that factor into what might happen? How much frontage do they have? They actually had us run an analysis on street frontage to determine which lots could actually be subdivided and which couldn't. And also looking at elevation, where are they located? How does that play into our South Hills policies? So their work on this has been extensive. So they do currently have a recommendation related to the smaller lots, which I'll talk about in a minute. But I first wanted to frame this again in respect to our pillars. The group has strongly considered our Compact Urban Development pillar. That is, we know that we want to make the best use of land inside the UGB, but they've also considered where our community is in terms of livability, and the infill compatibility standards process, and knowing that there are strong sentiments about what development happens and where and how much. And so that was taken strongly into consideration by the group before they put together their work. So the first piece that we're going to report on today is what the group is putting forward for lots less than an acre. We have over 45,000 lots, or almost 45,000 lots, that are less than one acre in the city that are currently developed. The past rate of infill on those lots, that is, how many of them have actually subdivided or partitioned in the last, between 2001 and 2008, was less than 1%. You can see less than a half percent. We've seen a relatively small amount of infill. The group is recommending that that rate of infill be the rate of infill that continues going forward. That is, the development that we've seen in our existing neighborhoods would continue at about the same pace. And again, this is development that's allowed by our code, so when you have a lot and wants to subdivide it, that would produce about 600 additional dwelling units over the next 20 years. The group is continuing their work on lots larger than one acre, which you can see only represent 400 lots. So they have done a tremendous amount of work, and have addressed the lion's share of the lots that are out there. They have a small piece of work left on our larger parcels. So they will be determining what the infill rate should be on those, and how many units those lots will provide over the next 20 years. I'm going to pass it back to Heather.
So now I'm going to talk a little bit about efficiency strategies. So these are, we've talked a little bit about this before, land use efficiency strategies are changes that you can do to policies or programs, either changes or new policies or programs, that help you develop your land inside the urban growth boundary more efficiently, which means getting more homes inside the urban growth boundary than you can currently expect under your existing regulations, programs, et cetera. So looking at efficiency strategies is consistent with our Compact Urban Development pillar. It's also consistent with state requirements. They require that you consider efficiency, land use efficiency strategies before you consider a UGB expansion. We did a number of things to try to collect ideas about efficiency strategies, surveys, Community Resource Group, we got feedback on strategies at public events. What we found is a couple of things. One is that we have been doing a lot in the past couple of years, even past 10 years or more, to already try to use our land more efficiently inside the urban growth boundary. Some examples are, for instance, our transplan strategies. Some of those strategies promote density and development around transit corridors and nodal areas. We had the 2001 land use code update embedded in that, where a number of what, if we didn't have those in there now, we would be considering land use efficiency strategies, ways to get smaller lots, then we currently see ways to increase density, those sorts of things. Some of these things, I would say, there are other parts of the state that could use some of these strategies that they're actually not using. So we've actually already done quite a few things. The other thing that we've been thinking about and learned and are aware of is that we've also done some recent programs to help make the density and the infill that we're seeing from these strategies fit in better. We had the minor code amendments, we have the infill compatibility standards process, and really even Opportunity Siting, all tried to make infill fit in better. So as a result of some of these efficiency strategies, we also know that we need to couple those with making sure that the development we see is compatible. We've also developed the Envision Eugene pillars. Two of the pillars are particularly important here. One is the Neighborhood Livability pillar, which talks about not increasing density in single-family neighborhoods beyond what's allowable, except through infill compatibility standards or Opportunity Siting. In addition, we have the Affordable Housing pillar, which talks about trying to get additional affordable housing types through our strategies. So when you take all these things into consideration, it really helped us narrow the focus of what efficiency strategies might actually be feasible, doable, and compatible. And it focuses down to small-scale infill, small-scale, single-family infill strategies. And we have only two that we're going to talk about here, and they actually are not assumed to get us that much additional single-family housing, because as we talked about, we've already been doing a lot to try to get additional housing. So at this point, we're talking about promoting secondary dwelling units. This is an idea that we've talked about with the community. It also came out of the ICS, one of the subcommittees, a Residential Infill Subcommittee, promoting secondary dwelling units such as by scaling the systems development charges or the permitting fees associated with secondary dwelling units, reducing them to recognize that these are really small units, smaller than a primary dwelling that you typically see, so they have less impacts on our utility systems. Secondary dwelling units are really accessory dwellings. Typically, they're above a garage, they're tucked behind another home, maybe off of an alley, those kinds of things. So as you can see up there, we actually don't see that many now. We see about 10 per year, and we're assuming an increase of about 50% more a year, which gets us 100 additional secondary dwelling units in 20 years. So not a huge additional amount there.
If I could just add to that, Heather, I think that would be in tandem with continuing the infill compatibility tools that would need to be in place, that those are well-received infill.
Right. And same with this strategy here, allowing alley access lots in single-family areas. This was another idea that also came out of ICS and the Residential Infill Group associated with ICS. with ICS. You could actually assume or write the standards to allow more alley access lots than we're talking about here. We're talking about maybe 60 additional alley access lots in 20 years, pretty small amount. But there are, as Lisa was mentioning, there are concerns about overdeveloping alleys in single-family neighborhoods. There's concerns about compatibility. There's concerns about emergency vehicle access. And so this is real, is almost kind of a pilot strategy to focus the idea of getting alley access lots at the edges or the ends of a residential block. And so you can see that the graphic shows that if the lot was more than 150 feet away from the street and alley intersection, that would be too far from the ends of the block. So we're really talking about some targeted areas at the ends of blocks where maybe a concept like this would work with additional development standards to make it compatible. And finally, the last option here to try to get more capacity inside the urban growth boundary that we're talking about today is the possibility of land redesignation. What we're talking about here is exploring opportunities of, if there are areas that are in the existing urban growth boundary, that it might make sense to redesignate to low-density residential. And what that just means is, does it make sense? Are there some areas that in the future, it actually might make sense for those areas to develop as single-family residential instead of whatever it is that they're planned for right now? One of our, and as a result of that, that would reduce the amount of land we might need to expand for single-family. One of our pillar strategies focuses on providing, as we talked about earlier, all of our multi, our new multifamily housing need along core transit corridors and core commercial areas. So in thinking about that strategy and really trying to focus density towards the city core, the idea came up of, and we've heard this mentioned before at the Community Resource Group, are there areas that are outside of the core area that are already planned for multifamily, but it would make more sense, it might make more sense for them to develop as single-family? So again, thinking about, if you've got a strategy that is focused on providing density towards the core and towards transit services, do you have other areas of the city that, with this kind of new plan of Envision Eugene, maybe it needs to be updated? And think about those areas on the outer edges of the city, that they might be opportunities to develop as single-family rather than multifamily? There's other considerations to think about there, too. Do they have, are those areas, do they have traffic constraints that might make it more difficult to do multifamily in those areas? And again, just the idea of having multifamily on the outer edges of the city, does that make sense for our future plan? So at this point, we've sent out some letters to some property owners. We're really kind of gauging the interest and thus gauging the feasibility of even doing this strategy. What this map here shows, hopefully you can see that, the dark, kind of orange color is medium-density residential, areas that are planned for multifamily. The two areas that are circled there in red are, the two areas and the medium-density residential areas in those circles are the areas that we've sent letters out to the property owners. They're areas that, again, might have traffic constraints, they're kind of at the outer edges of the city, they haven't, they're in areas that are already developed as single-family, so you already see that kind of development pattern rather than multifamily or higher density. So that's where we've sent the letters out to, again, just explore the interest, engage the feasibility. There might be some trade-offs there that those areas don't make sense, or not all of those areas make sense, but again, this is kind of exploratory at this point. And so now Jason is going to, I'm handing it back to Jason, and he's going to try to put all this together for you.
All right. So what the heck does all this mean? We'll put some numbers on this, hopefully that'll make it more clear. What this slide does, again, you've seen this slide, puts some numbers on some of these strategies that we've talked about here. So let's start at the left there, our actual need, the number of single-family homes needed. The range right now is between 6,000 and 9,000. What that reflects is our housing mix. It could be anywhere from 60% single-family, 40% multifamily, to the opposite, 40% single-family, 60% multifamily. That creates a range of single-family homes needed. So that's our need that we're still trying to meet. On the right here, you can see the various numbers for the strategies that we've already talked about. Our vacant land can provide about 4,300 of those. Partially vacant land is at least 600. They still have work to do on the larger parcels, and that number will go up because there is capacity on those larger parcels. Efficiency strategies, you can see relatively small, that pretty much just indicates that we're already pretty efficient with our code. We're doing a lot of great things already. And then the land redesignation, the top end of that would be 1,200 dwelling units, likely to be something less. So when you put those all together, what it tells us is that of that 6,000 to 9,000 dwelling unit need, we're already meeting at least 4,460 of that inside of our urban growth boundary, and that number will go up as we complete the work on partially vacant land and land redesignation. So relative to the 6,000 and 9,000 gives you at least an order of magnitude on where we are relative to meeting our need inside the urban growth boundary. So we've talked a lot about dwelling units. At some point, we will start talking a little bit more about acres again. And to put that into context, up there on the top left, there's our dwelling units needed. We'll be getting closer to that here over the next month or so. As a frame of reference, when you think about dwelling units, the general rule of thumb, at least for what we've seen for density in Eugene, and this includes accounting for roads and streets, it's about 4.2 units per acre. So it gives you a sense for how to convert dwelling units into acres. That gives us our single-family land need, the housing portion alone of that. Unfortunately, that's not all there is. Everything is more complex than it appears. In order to get our single-family land need, the actual acreage, we have to add in some other things besides the homes, the land for homes. We need to add in, what land do we need for commercial jobs that occur in residential areas, and our land for parks and schools? So both of those, or all of those, need to be added into that, and only then will you actually have the acreage that you need. So the conversion isn't quite as simple as dwelling units to acres based on that 4.2 gets you in the ballpark. We'll be talking about these other pieces in the coming months. Throw it back to Lisa to wrap us up.
Yeah, I'm just going to wrap it up so we can give our community members a chance to talk about some of the numbers and how they landed, where they've landed. What we've tried to do right today was really provide a complete picture for you of all the very complex factors and data assumptions that go into determining housing mix and ultimately figuring out what the land need is for 20 years. The numbers are really important, but I think equally important is understanding the context and having an understanding for the human scale. What do those numbers mean and how do they translate into your and our community's everyday experiences and values? So that's what we're going to continue trying to do. So here, the work that comes out of our community group work, we want to make sure that we're serving it back up in a way that people understand what it means without having to pour through the spreadsheets themselves. So that's what we're going to keep doing. We're going to have a few open houses this summer, July 6th, next Wednesday, at the atrium from 3:00 to 6:00. We're actually targeting some of our customers that come into the PICs, people who may not be tracking this because they're out there building things or whatever they're doing. So that would be, it's also tying in with our Summer in the City program. We have two others scheduled on August 3rd and 7th, and then we'll be back here on July 27th. And I think what we'll be doing there is the next steps, we'll be coming out of the completion of the TRG's work and also starting to talk about the industrial. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Sue and Sean, and then Mia and Rick to talk a little bit about where you've been.
Sure. I'll go first. It's been a long and tedious, can you hear me? All right?
I was just going to suggest we have a little less.
Hi, folks. It's been a long and tedious process. I'll just give you briefly where I think we are with respect to the TRG, then I'll turn it over to Sue, and then we'll turn it over to the partially vacant land laborers. We're in the process now of finishing up the preparatory work around housing mix. That's what you're hearing a report on today, and you'll hear a conclusion, I hope, on that on July 27th. That's been one of our two active subgroups, partially vacant land. The other one is what we lightheartedly call the spreadsheet committee. The spreadsheet committee is our initial attempt to start addressing the seventh pillar, monitoring and implementation, initially by finding perhaps an overly simplistic but at least usable tactic for finding the consequences of the efficiencies that have been mentioned with respect to housing mix. We'll expect to adopt and extend that when we begin examining the assumptions and need for industrial land as well. Those are the three things I think we're set on right now, which is finishing the housing mix, partially vacant land, and, I'm sorry, four things, industrial land, and then beginning to look at the monitoring issues. So that's where we are at the moment.
I think the main point I want to make is that this is a remarkable process, and it has, you know, created an opportunity for us to examine information and data, numbers, trends, and hopefully feed back to you the information that will allow you to make really good decisions for the community. To the extent possible, we're trying to take out personal biases and opinions from the data that we will hand over to you so that, you know, what you'll get is actually facts. And that's not real easy to do all the time, but I think we're doing extremely well in that process. You can also see that there's a conflict sometimes between our values and what we have to work with. And so ultimately, you will have the hard decisions to make. You can also see that one of the reasons why our meeting schedule has been so aggressive is because it's a hard topic. And hopefully, we're taking a lot of the heat out of that for you so that when it comes to your time to make decisions, you'll have some real good material to work with.
I want to recognize the other members of the committee who are here.
Mia or Rick, are you going to?
Go ahead.
I'm not really sure how much detail you want to get, but we did spend, as was said, eight or nine meetings for hours at each time. Rick and I are on this committee with Kevin Matthews and Ed McMahon, and I would second what Sue said. We've been trying very hard to be value-neutral, and just, we are looking at this as an inventory process only. These are all lands that have at least $1,000 of improvement on them, and they are not lands that were inventoried as part of ECLA. And there are thousands of acres of this land that hasn't been looked at before. And I just want to touch on the lands that are under one acre. As Jason mentioned, we did land on a number for that, which was basically just, we just continued the rate of development that has been occurring on those lands. And I want to tell you why we did that and see how you feel about that. What staff did for us was they pulled up all the lots that are low-density residential that are dimensionally capable of being divided. As was said, there was 45,000 of these lots, but most of those are too small or shaped wrong and couldn't be legally divided. But there were several thousand lots that are dimensionally large enough that could be divided, several thousand lots. But the trouble is, when we zeroed in and looked at those arially, we found that many of them, maybe even most of them, had a house position so that it wasn't, even though the lot was big enough, the house was such that you couldn't divide it. And given the deadlines that we had, it was obvious that we could not check each and every lot, which is basically what it would take. You'd have to look with an aerial map at every lot. It's not like it's impossible to do, but we couldn't do it in the time we had. We didn't even have time to do sort of a representative sampling to get an idea of how many, what percentage of these lots could be divided. But we had, we just sort of had a guess, I guess you'd call it, based on the ones we did look at, that there were enough lots that could be divided that the past rate that was seen of about 30 lots per year deriving from these lands could be continued over the next 20 years. But that is a, you know, I would say, a weak spot in our analysis, and some of us thought it would be a very interesting project for Eugene to take on, to actually do an inventory like that at some point, so that you would at least understand, so we would know how many lots potentially are out there that could be divided and where are they? But we didn't do that piece of work. And then, I guess I'll let Rick talk about the lots that are over an acre.
Thanks, Mia. And to add a little bit to what Mia was talking about on the ones under an acre, one of the reasons we felt somewhat comfortable about our recommendation or what we would bring forward is that most of these are in existing neighborhoods. And so as we take a look at the pillar about protecting neighborhoods, that was sort of a comfort zone for us to sort of deal with past rates of change, recognizing that that's diminishing number, that as we develop those over time, we actually have less of those to develop in the future. The parts over one acre, to give you an example, I think Jason said it, there's around four, a little over 400 of these lots out there. They may have improvement values from something under 100,000 to, some of these have improvement values, according to the county assessor's records, far exceeding $1 million. So we talked originally about trying to find different ways to look at it, and believe me, I think this group pretty much strategized more ways to look at land than I could ever imagine in my life. We looked at it from every which way you could and started to look at some of the state requirements for how we deal with it. And the one thing that's important that we try to sort of describe differently is when we look at the, state law talks about capacity. How much can we put on these? It doesn't talk about how much will go on these lands. And so it's a difference when you think about it. We're trying to estimate what capacity is for these 400-plus units on what we believe actually could occur from a capacity, not that someone's going to take their extra acre of land and necessarily divide it. And part of what we are now trying to do, because we have so few of these, as we talked about earlier, we sort of have a rate of redevelopment for smaller parcels, because we had enough sample to be able to do that. The larger ones, we actually had areas in size categories where we couldn't determine a rate of redevelopment of a larger parcel because we may only have four of them. So what's the rate of redevelopment? So we believe it's more important, we're actually going to now go back in and take a good look at all 400 of these lots, as staff has done some initial work for us, and try to really get a better understanding, what capacity would be available on each one of these. So when we come back to you, we're going to have an idea of what that capacity is. Now, again, I'm talking about capacity, and it's going to be your tough job in areas where it may be neighborhoods, where people want to maintain these lands for open space or for gardening or for urban farming, to say, how do we deal with the capacity and where will that go? There are methods through the state law that allow us to sort of, I won't use the word necessarily exempt, but we can tweak on that capacity ratio to say, maybe it's something less than a complete 100%, because there's going to be some of those that probably won't redevelop for reasons that we hope to learn as we do these visual inspections of all these. So we had hoped last Wednesday, when we met, to have the final numbers. When we went to the TRG meeting on Monday and talked about this with the rest of the group, it was decided that we're better off to take the little bit of extra time we need to get through these last 400, because they do, as indicated, represent a substantial amount of land in this community, upwards to 600 acres, if I remember correctly. So you can see that there may be a lot of capacity there, but we want to understand what that capacity really is, because you've got South Hills, you've got the swale problems, you've got sizable improvements, and there's just a multitude of things that may affect the capacity. So that's where we're at at this point in time on that.
I think it's really clear how much work has gone into this, and I want to acknowledge not just the time, but the mental bandwidth that these folks and others have put into this process. There's a few other people I think snuck in. Ed McMahon, Barbara Mitchell, and Laura Potter are here. If I missed anybody else, it's because I can't turn that far around. And so not just the bandwidth in going through this, but also the leadership that you've shown and trying to have those really difficult conversations in a value-neutral way. It's hard to do. I think as they conclude their work, what our task is then going to be, to present it to you in a way that you understand, whether you look at it through a triple bottom line framework or the pillars analysis, what does it mean? So if we assign maximum capacity, what is that going to do to the farm land inside the urban growth boundary, or what is that going to do to industrial land? We want to make sure that you have all that information in a very tangible, understandable way so that you can make decisions, understanding what those trade-offs are as we balance this plan.
Hey, ready to have some questions or comments? Just part of all of us, we say thank you and over and over again, and I know it's been long and tedious. I hope it's been interesting, too, actually.
Absolutely.
Just a couple of comments I want to make. I just can appreciate that every time we have a discussion, you bring back the pillars so we know the values we share and what we're aiming at. I wanted to make the comment upon listening to everybody, that when we talk about affordability in terms of unit cost, it's really a conversation, in my mind, that comes from two ways. One, we have a pro- One, we have a problem with affordability; the other, we have a problem with jobs and wages, and those things go together. You can't separate them. The student housing issue, I think we should actually stop, probably you don't, but many people kind of always think of that as a temporary thing. It's a permanent thing. It's part of the population of our community, and my question always is, where and how much, and what are we aiming for? Because we know we have some livability and density issues to deal with, and then, so if we add this many students, or even more, where is it that we would like them to be, and what criteria are we going to use? I like the idea of considering and monitoring what's happening with our neighbors, but I actually would urge you to think beyond that, and think that we ought to be, actually be having conversations with them about where they think they want to go, and some of the gives and takes from their decisions with our decisions, and how those will come together or not come together. Appreciate the redesignation exploration. And my final question is, do you have, taking into consideration sort of decommissioned schools as part of your land supply?
Do you want to talk about how you looked at that, or Jason, you want to?
Separate order. Go ahead.
It has not been.
So just putting that-
Well, not specifically, although it's part of the land inventory and the land use. And we certainly have had ongoing conversations with 4J about sort of their plans, and we're, in fact, even met with the superintendent prior to their difficult decisions this spring to talk about, we were projecting some of the density and residential to be happening. So I don't know if you have anything to add.
Any school district property that had board action to be placed as a surplus property was included, was accounted for. There are properties that are either decommissioned schools or that have not had board action to be designated as surplus, and those remain-
So we can add those as we go along?
Right. That's one of those monitoring pieces. Comes up in five years, we can change our supply.
Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there are lots and lots of questions that I have had throughout the process, and I've had a chance a number of times to ask Commissioner Duncan and others the questions. And really, the presentation answers a lot of the questions. I think you guys have been absolutely thorough in use of your time. You've been thorough in addressing some of the concerns that I had regarding partially vacant lands. And Mia, I believe at some point in the future, we probably should have a more complete study of the aerials and see where, you know, where the lands are truly partially vacant. It's not going to happen right now, but you guys have done yeoman's work, where I have had lots of questions. I have nothing to say, other than praise for the work that you've done, and thank you very much from my heart, and hopefully the entire community thanks you for the tremendous planning commission-like work that you guys have put in on us. Thank you.
Okay, Mike, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. First, again, thank you to staff, and certainly to all the volunteers on TRG. I'm amazed at the number of hours that you guys have to put into this, and some of you that are on planning commission, so you have that as well. It's really a great deal of work in the community, very, very appreciative. I have two questions for Emily, and one for staff folks, I think. My first one is, during the MYCAP process, we put the stormwater manual in code, right?
No, you didn't put it, probably need, I don't know if my-
Help me under, yeah. Let me, I'll just go through this. It was my understanding that during the MYCAP process, we placed the whole of the stormwater manual into code, okay? So I heard what Jason was saying with regard to the swales and drainage ways that are non-Gol 5 listed, or what have you, that are not protected in code. Can you help me reconcile that, please?
Well, you know, the state law doesn't specifically call out the kind of protections that we are working to supply for those stormwater facilities, swales, whatever you want to call them. State law specifically calls out our ability to consider protections under statewide planning Gol 5, which is our natural resource inventory, Gol 15, which is our greenway inventory. So we need to look at that more carefully and determine how state law allows us to consider different densities for different areas with constraints like the ones you're talking about.
And my question, too, is also on the reverse side, not just what we're capable of doing, but what are we liable for if, now that we've put that manual into code, and we're not protecting those, and we're saying at the same time, you can't build on those, we're going to use the code on the other side for the capacity to actually build, are we going to put ourselves in some jeopardy?
No, we're being very, very careful about that. You've been very good about keeping that issue on the forefront, and so staff have kept that in mind the whole time. Jason, actually, can probably address it more thoroughly, but the protections that have been applied to those swales or open waterways, particularly in River Road, Santa Clara, have been considered in the densities that we assign in that area. And so, you know, I can't put numbers to it, although I know that staff have looked at that.
Could I jump in and just say, during the ECLR process, I asked that question a bunch of times, and we said, and I was told, those are 100% developable. So how are we accounting for them?
The, when you say that, you mean the drainage ways and swales? Yeah. They would, in terms of the density that Emily mentioned, they would be accounted for from the standpoint that citywide, we've seen a density of X, and that accounts for the fact that when an application comes in, certain parts of a property can't be developed for-
And it's not regionally specific to-
Correct. It's citywide. Correct.
Is that perhaps, considering the amount of green space in that first map, worthwhile for the TRG to consider that maybe we ought to be more regionally specific in that analysis?
Certainly, there's been a lot of discussion about that.
There has, and I think one of the things that we've talked about, and I don't know specifically how detailed the TRG went on this, but some of this, because it's regionally specific, the best place to look at, it's not so much what's in the code or what's required, but maybe it's what toolkit can we have to see to maximize the capacity of a particular area. So, for example, we're going to be looking at area planning, refinement planning, or whatever you want to call it, for the River Road, Santa Clara area.
After the SNAP.
Right. And so, and the work that's happening right now is really already advancing that goal. So ultimately, I think what we'll want to look at is whether there's specific inventory that has to happen, we can look at that. But if we're trying to maximize maybe two different goals, one would be the current capacity to avoid expanding beyond what we need to, the other is to make sure that we can protect some of our open waterways and things that we value. So maybe things like cluster housing development is a tool, where we come up with some incentives to make that happen. So part of it is making sure we're clear what the goals are, figuring out what do we need to know to achieve as many of those goals are, and then what are the tools to get us there? So some of that will be planning policy framework, others of those will be implementation tools that will come out of that planning framework. So those will be addressed, and I do believe that the specific things you're asking about will most appropriately be looked at in that refinement planning process.
Okay. I appreciate that. With the, with what Rick said, with regard to the under an acre, over an acre kind of redevelopment analysis, why is it that, I mean legally speaking, I guess, why is it that what will actually happen, or what is likely to happen, or what the market might dictate to happen, what people might choose to do, isn't a part of the analysis of that?
If he wants me to. Happy to answer that question.
You know, you could say the same thing about vacant lands, too. It's interesting that we have 4,300 dwelling units worth of capacity in vacant, in completely vacant lands, that in theory, the owner could choose to develop at any time. For whatever reasons, not everybody chooses to develop on a timeline. And so it's not a factor, you know, like Rick said, we're not trying to actually do a calculus, and that's not what the buildable lands inventory is about, to figure out what actually will Eugene look like in 20 years, you know, development-wise. We're trying to figure out what is the amount of land out there that could have houses put on it, and what is that number? How many houses could you put on there? And it gets a little trickier with partially vacant lands, and we have more discretion there to look at factors-
Legal discretion.
Yes, factors for the likelihood of redevelopment, and that's exactly what we did for the lands that are under one acre. I'll tell you, if we had inventoried each and every one, if we'd gone through that, it would be much more than 600 lots, you know, worth of redevelopment, you know? But we did a calculus there, we're allowed to do that.
And I just want to be clear that the discretion comes in the state planning framework around what we, how we have to look at the vacant lands versus the partially vacant. So that's discretion, and I didn't mention this earlier, but we are having ongoing conversations with the state. A week ago, we were up talking to staff from the Department of Land Conservation Development, and then just last Thursday, I think, we were up talking to the Land Conservation Development Commission. So we're keeping them up to date, as our community resource group comes up with things for us to look at, innovative things. We need to keep checking back with the state to see, one, are they okay with our approach? Two, how does it fit within the framework, and, you know, what flexibility, if any, exists there? And then I might just take, be gratuitous and plug that while we were there, Mia and Sue accepted a award on our behalf for the Star Award, which I know you heard about, but it was nice to have them up there with us last week.
Good job. Did Rick?
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah. One of the other things, and that's why I mentioned earlier, is state law requires us to deal with capacity, not likelihood of development. And realize that what we're hoping occurs through our monitoring program that we're going to put in place, the seventh pillar, really deals with us watching over this on a continuous basis, and as demand requires us to move forward with some sort of modification, we'll be able to do that a little quicker and easier than maybe this process looks like we're getting it done. The other part is, we have this capacity, which we're working on, which is a 20-year capacity. We don't assume that everything's going to be built out the next 20 years. We assume that somewhere, as we move forward, that we will have to deal with that continuing capacity issue, and how much of it is actually being redeveloped or developed as we move forward, and that'll be things that'll come back to this body, this policy body, over, you know, every several years. And again, as we put new policies in place, because of the extent we're inventorying this time, we'll have a pretty good idea of what the effect of different kind of policies will be on what we move forward with as capacity in the future, such as a change in stormwater, possibly, or possibly change from federal levels on how we have to deal with certain components within our urban growth boundaries.
Mike, Emily has something she wants to say.
So to follow up on your questions about what the law says, it's interesting, because as we deal with those issues, there are some areas where the law's very prescriptive, and other areas where it's simply not. And this is one of those areas where it's not so prescriptive. The definition of redevelopable land is land zoned for residential use on which development has already occurred, but on which, due to present or expected market forces, there exists the strong likelihood that existing development will be converted to more intensive residential uses during the planning period. So, you know, that combined with how the state defines buildable land, which includes our analysis of what land would be suitable and available for development, it gives us a lot of leeway to look at what we really think is going to happen in the ways that the TRG has identified.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I thought of another question while we were going. I appreciate the regional analysis piece that you put in there with regard to all the other factors. Will we have that as a part of the seventh pillar as well, where in the ongoing analysis, we're going to be doing regional impact analysis? Cool?
And that's exactly the kind of stuff we're talking to the commission last week in Salem about.
Okay. Lastly, I saw in the piece that said the Echo Northwest recommendation was a 55% to 60% range. Did I hear you accurately that the TRG provided that same range recommendation?
No. No. The TRG has not taken a position. What we tried to give you was the factors and the consequences associated with bookends, one 40-60, the other 60-40.
Considering that Echo Northwest recommended the 55% to 60% range, why are we still considering the 40% to 60% numbers?
Echo Northwest recommended 55% to 45, or 55% single-family, 45% multifamily. They didn't land on a range, they actually landed on a point, a mix, 55-45.
And that was an empirical analytical analysis as part of the comprehensive lands assessment, that, so at this point, you know, that's a starting point, and there's good data there, but then we began our community resource group process, and we're looking at other things. So the state will be comfortable with a range if we can back it up with why it makes sense for us.
Are we constrained with that range?
In what?
The 40% to 60% numbers?
I think the constraint is in how defensible our findings are on why we landed somewhere. So you've probably heard about Bend, and they've had some trouble trying to make some assertions about things and then back them up. And so there's certainly a body of case law that Emily can speak to, but it's more about landing on the number that we can say with some degree of comfort, or give them some degree of comfort, is based on past trends, future projections, and different things like that. So they recognize that there's changing dynamics, but we'll have a tough time going way on either end of that spectrum, without a lot of really good information to back it up.
Okay. Thanks.
So I've got George Brown, and Chris, and Alan.
Thanks. I've just got a couple of questions. One of the bullets in the presentation was read something like this, "Explore opportunities to redesignate to low-density residential." Can you give me an example?
Yeah, let me just-
Do you have a specific example in mind?
Yeah, I'll give a general comment, and then I'll let Heather maybe tag team on that. So that's really, the exploratory nature, pilot nature of that is to accomplish a couple of goals. One is, we want to make sure that we are using our land as efficiently as possible within the urban growth boundary, so that we don't have to look for single-family land need outside, or we can minimize the single-family land need we might have outside the urban growth boundary. The other one is, we talked about those regional impacts and reducing reliance on the automobile, efficient development along transit corridors. So if we're assigning a high number of multifamily at the edge of the urban growth boundary, but we don't have the efficient transportation network and transit network in place, then you start to create a lot more trips. If we're, I mean, this isn't science. We don't know exactly what's going to happen with the market and with where people want to live, but as Heather said, we're looking at, right now, that designation is in an area where there's already some low-density, single-family house. It may make more sense to allow some of that single-family to develop there, have more multifamily in a more efficient pattern along the transportation corridors, than expand the urban growth boundary to provide the needed land that the state law requires provided. So that was the framework. And I don't know if you had more detailed-
No, I get that. Thanks for that explanation. I understand. That makes a little more sense to me.
Okay.
But is the thinking, I'm just wondering, is it just the current thinking that there's not enough low-density land, I mean, housing land?
We have, we are going to, yes. Our housing, single-family land, yes.
According to any of the scenarios?
It does. And Jason, is there anything you want to-
Even 40-60, there's not enough low-density.
Correct.
In the inventory. Okay.
But once we get the partially vacant lands analysis completed, we'll have a better idea of what that deficit is.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Chris, you're next.
Thank you. I guess really, the first thing I want to say right off the bat is how unbelievably appreciative I am of the work that you've done. This is, this is a massive, massive job, and you mentioned that part of why you're doing this is to help us out when we get to the time to make a tough decision, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, because you are, you're providing assistance on an issue that was here when I first got on the council, probably was here when Sean was on the council, will probably be here long after I get off the council, and this was the original whack-a-mole issue. And welcome to whack-a-mole, because that's kind of what you're doing right now. I think, for example, you're having to consider two of our pillars that can be in direct conflict with each other, and you have to navigate how those two pillars can reconcile around this issue. And I'm incredibly grateful for your willingness to take that on. And I think the way that that happens is by your commitment to being collaborative on it. I mean, I look at the membership of this group, and I see a collaborative group, not only collaborative within yourself, but collaborative also with staff and other members of the community. We will get nowhere without that level of collaboration and the willingness, as you say, to put aside personal biases and prejudices and try to reach a reasonable decision for the entire community. I get that, and I appreciate that, and I understand it, and collaboration's how we'll do it. Because the last point that occurs to me is, you can have it fast, you can have it right, or you can have it cheap, pick any two. And one of the pillars that you have decided to go with is, it's got to be right. And I would agree with that 100%. So if it takes a little longer, with your deliberation, in order to come back to us with something that you truly believe is right, I'm willing to go with you on that, because I think that's what our community expects. So in the large context of how I'm reacting to your work, keep going. Keep doing what you're doing, you're doing it great, and you will help us in ways that I can't even estimate right now, because the way in which you're doing it will be really helpful. And I am confident that I will be able to look at the numbers and the figures and the basis behind those numbers and figures, and be able to have a high confidence that I can maybe not rely in every single case on what those are, but that I can really take those into account, and they will really help me with, and my colleagues, with those decisions when it's time to make them. So I guess I'm waxing on and on, but it's because you're doing a lot of work, and you deserve to get that kind of praise. And so keep doing it, because I think it's really, it's really helpful, not just for me, but for the community.
Alan?
So I'd like to add my voice to the chorus of thank yous and keep up the good work, because this is extremely important. We've apparently entered the season where things become political, and some are already in full campaign mode, so that makes our job going forward probably a little tougher. And so President Obama calls it the silly season. And so President Obama calls it the silly season. I think we're there already. So the more you can do, as Chris said, the better off we're going to be in being able to hash our way through this. In the pack, there's two letters that I wanted to bring up. One was from the Housing Policy Board, and one of the things that they say is that, that they encourage us to be bold in our decision about this, and that there's a lot of factors that will drive down the future need for single-family detached housing in Eugene and drive up the demand for multifamily. And so they urge us to accommodate more multifamily housing. And the Sustainability Commission said, "There are indications that many drivers of the housing market are changing, including generational differences in housing, housing preferences, availability of mortgages, cost of transportation, energy and buildings, community and community commitments to tackling climate change and local energy," and that retaining the status quo, a 60/40 mix of single-family to multifamily housing will block our ability to achieve our shared vision as represented in the pillars. So they see a mix closer to the 40/60 alternative as much more consistent with the Seven Pillars. I agree with both of those statements. Can you pull up Slide 31, which is the single-family housing need, where it was kind of the summary slide that had the numbers on it? And then, and it had 4,300 plus, greater than 600, 760, 1,200? The one before that one? So when you add all those numbers up, that's 6,260. And I guess, you know, one of the things that the CRG and the city manager said, "Let's be aggressive in our assumptions about stuff." Those seem to be kind of the outside, the bookend numbers, so those would be what I would consider the aggressive goals. But then when you go to the next slide, that 60 to 60 turns into 4,460, a difference of about 1,800 dwelling units. And I'm wondering how that math worked, and why isn't this, if that's a range, why isn't that number a range?
So that's a starting point, it's greater than. So maybe, Jason, do you want to add?
We certainly, obviously, the 4,460 is just the 4,300 vacant and the 160 efficiency strategies, the two numbers that we're most certain about, and the TRG has more or less blessed. So we didn't include-
So that's just the first two?
Yeah, we know it won't be less than that.
Two that we know so far.
Right. And, you know, we know we'll have more than 600 partially vacant and somewhere less than 1,200 there. So it's the low end, it'll be larger, that's why there's not a range.
So it could be up to another 1,800.
But it won't be less than.
Right.
Okay. So, okay. That makes sense to me. Lisa, you mentioned that you've been meeting with the DLCDs. Are they okay with this phased approach that comes out of the jaws of uncertainty? I know you like doing that.
Just for the record.
Are they okay with that approach?
So we-
Conversations with them?
I would say that we had our first conversation with them. We've certainly been talking to various staff members, but we took basically all the staff you see, plus Emily and a couple others, up to meet with, I think, six or seven staff from the department. And it was the first time, we walked them through a pretty detailed PowerPoint of where we started and where we think we're going, and included a bunch of talk about the phased implementation approach. I think what I can fairly characterize is that they're intrigued, they see some merit, but they also have a bunch of questions and comments about how that could work. And so, in my mind, the point of going up there and talking to them, not just because they'll be our partners and we need to know each other by name and face, but we went through all these big issues, like Jason had a chance to talk about economic development and some of the industrial. We had Tom Hoag in the room, who, I mean, as all you know, they're really busy. It's hard to get FaceTime with them. And so, sitting down and walking through this, now Tom is calling Jason, he wants to hear a lot about it. He sees a lot of the areas down here as very promising on a statewide basis for economic development, industrial areas. And so I think what we accomplished what our goal was, which was to begin the dialogue, to pique their interest in what we're working on here. And what we heard, not just from the staff, but also from the commission the following week, was, "Thank you for taking this approach," because they're tired of sitting through the Bends and the McMinnvilles. And, I mean, they've had a lot of difficult processes, and so they're glad that we're sort of learning from that and trying to do it a little bit differently, and they're welcoming that. But I would say there's a lot of questions to be answered, so we're going to be working closely with them on that.
Thanks.
So I guess that takes us full circle around to where Sean said this is long and tedious and-
And worthwhile.
And worthwhile. Right. Ricky, Jason, you want to say?
Yeah, a couple of comments. One of the things that, because we really don't have enough to do yet with our, on our plate, so we're going to try to add more. We have talked about really kind of pulling apart the idea of our mixed-use strategies and taking a look at those along our corridors, which is something I think we'll do at some point and not too distant. The other thing we've talked about, which is real important, is affordability. And I like to define affordability, because there's really two different kinds. There's a statewide goal of affordability, which is how do we create housing for everyone who's looking for a house in their price range? And then, of course, the affordability for the lower and moderate-income people. The second one is a much more difficult problem for us to get a handle on, and it's been studied by nearly every community in Oregon and all over the country. But also part of that is the affordability from statewide goals, which is something that we're going to try to look at as we go through and look at not only the vacant parcels, but the partially vacant parcels, to try to say, can we meet the requirements of the statewide goal as we move forward in some of these other income strata? So we hope that as we come back to you, and this is going to be my plug, I know they don't have enough to do now, but I'd like to be able to present you with at least some ideas on what it means from our capacity side, how are we going to fill those two affordability questions? I don't know that we're going to get a good answer for you, but the goal, my goal would be is to try to get some of that to you as part of this process.
Thank you. Yes, Mia?
Got a parting shot, too. Two things, really. One thing, first is a request. I think after we finish our work inventorying these lands, it would be really good idea to put out the maps of, the tentative maps, to the neighborhood associations and citizens, and collect comments, and give us time to learn from them what they see in their backyard, did we get it right? Before we bring anything forward to you, I think it's worth it, this is, these partially vacant lands are probably going to be the corner of a lot of controversy if we don't take the time. So I hope we can have the time, I think it'll be well worth it. The second thing I just want to put out as a cautionary, I urge you to not think of the decisions that wound up getting made, whether land is in the inventory or out of the inventory, as some kind of protection for that land if you don't want it to be developed the way that it's currently allowed to be. Because our, your decision about whether to count it for purposes of inventory don't actually have anything to do with what the property owner can do with the land. And one of the things I think could be very useful when this is all mapped, you know, if the community or you are uncomfortable with the reality that's illustrated on the map, that that would be the time to do something about that, to change zoning, to redesignate, to move things around. You know, so I'm just saying, don't confuse an inventory, that's all we're doing, is just to count with policy choices.
And I think you're pointing out that redesignation can make some, perhaps, land available for single-family dwelling, but it can also perhaps protect some lands from ever being developed.
Correct.
So it will depend on what you find and what you want to have happen as a, as a community. I guess the other thing that I would just say about this whole process, I know for some it's taken long, but it seems to me to be very fruitful all along the way. And when we headed down this path, we could have taken it in a very short way and dealt with that, but we've chosen to take this path of very solid engagement and really deep conversations, and really trying to look at our land-use-transportation policies and all of these things together, so that we can kind of map out a future for ourselves and keep our eyes on it as we move into the future. So I think it's really very, very ambitious, and I'm hoping that we find many ways for the public to recognize that this is a, an effort that is actually in contradiction to what people often say about how the community works together. This is a perfect example, people of many points of views and perspectives finding that they work together very well and can do some really beneficial things to help our community move forward. I, I hope that story gets told over and over again, because I think it is a really important part of what makes our community a great community. And I just appreciate you and keep the faith. Thank you all, thank you staff, because I don't think, I think when we're looking, we see it takes, it takes this combination-
I would reiterate that, Mayor, it's been high-quality staff support.
We want to give praise to our staff for this, this has been an arduous process and happening in a time, by the way, when we have reduced capacity and reduced staff. So it's not only that they're doing exceptional work, but they're doing it in a very trying time, too. So it was just kudos all around, and we'll keep going. And I know, I heard you say it, and we know it, it's coming on our lap at some point, and we, and you're just trying to give us good, good information for when that happens. So thank you all very, very much. Thanks. And city manager, we seem to be, do we have enough time to do anything around the final item?
Sure. What I should just, Mayor, is at least let's start.
Okay.
We can make at least a kind of a quick presentation, because then we can pick it up in another meeting and only kind of fit it in a little bit, so.
So we'll try to transition as quickly as we can and have the conversation about numbers of dogs permitted per household. And thank you for being patient, and sorry for the late start, but can't cut off the conversation on the other topic.
Mike, I'm just going to turn over to you to get us off and start.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Mike McCarron, the Permit Review Manager for the Permit and Information Center. Catherine supervises the land use team, and they help customers with land use standards such as the number of animals that can be on a property. And I also was involved in the land use change with the maximum dogs that took effect in 2009. Well, the city codes about dogs were created to improve the community's livability, the quality of life in Eugene. And one way we do that is by limiting the number of dogs per home. And typically, when there's dog impacts, neighbors will go and talk about that. And in a lot of cases, that resolves the issue or makes improvement. But in those cases where it's, it doesn't, or if there's somebody who's uncomfortable with talking to their neighbor, then the city's there to help out. And in those cases, we will explain the community standards through the applicable codes, and really explain about the whole broad scope of the livability of the community. And so while this work around dogs isn't a big portion of the city's overall work, it is important, and we want to be a resource and help out when there's those significant impacts. So Catherine has some additional information that she can share with some background on how the city does promote this goal of livability.
Thanks, Mike. Good afternoon, I'm Catherine Kappa. And as Mike said, in 1968, when we first started regulating the number of dogs, we had it regulated at two. And then 2009, the council amended the code to up that number to three, with an additional fourth dog as a foster dog that a person could have for up to six months. For context, the city of Springfield allows three dogs. Cities of Medford and Salem don't regulate the number of dogs. They actually have a provision in their code for noise or nuisance or offenses, depending on the jurisdiction, and they can regulate dog barking through those ordinances. Over the years, the city has asked Lane County Animal Services to take the lead in responding to barking dog complaints, although the Eugene Police Department does receive some of the complaints. In July of 2010, due to reduced financial resources, Lane County Animal Services did not have the ability to send an officer out to investigate the complaints. So the city worked with county staff in the fall of 2010 to actually create what we call a good neighbor packet that is sent out to folks. It's included in your AIS packets. The Lane County Animal Services staff reported that in the summer and fall of last year, they had a higher number of complaints, but recently, their complaints have gone down to two a month. So it's, it seems to be working. In general, staff has found that the complaints about dogs focus more about the dog behavior than really about the number. And as an example, one barking dog can be more disruptive than multiple, multiple dogs that are well-managed. It's worth noting that EPD also provided data to us that from FY '09, when the ordinance allowed only two dogs, there were actually more complaints than when the ordinance was up to three. Don't know why. So factually, it just doesn't seem to have made a big impact on the community. And happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions? George?
I would just like to start off by saying that I brought this work session up as a result of requests by some of my constituents. They evidently were having problems with one of their neighbors that had three dogs. And having, being a dog owner myself, I've got three dogs, I know their behavior sometimes can get a little unruly. So, and I agree, it's not necessarily the number of dogs, it's the behavior and the problems associated with that. So I brought this work session up on their behalf to see how we're doing on that and the feeling around the table, if anybody else is interested in maybe looking at changing that number or leaving it the same or what. So, and my understanding of the situation, in my, the particular situation that was presented to me is that there were attempts to be made by, with the dog owner, by the neighbor. So it's not just one, one household that was complaining, evidently it was a number of neighbors that were complaining. And it was kind of a, at least the way it was portrayed to me, it was kind of an unwilling dog owner to do anything about the situation. And the, also the information I had was that perhaps people weren't real happy with the response they got from the city and animal control. So I was just wanting to bring it to the table for discussion and see where we are. And interestingly enough, I, and I don't know if the problem still exists, it probably does, the folks that brought this to my attention probably have just been waiting for this work session to come up. So I don't know, I suppose that that problem is still occurring in that neighborhood.
Alan?
Thanks for the info. Thanks, George, for bringing this up. I, I thought the info was really well put forth in all of this. Interesting to note that there were more complaints when the ordinance was two than there, when it was three. I think, I don't know the circumstances specifically, and when you're talking about, George, but the, you know, it could be that that circumstance would exist with two dogs. It sounds more like a behavior issue and a recalcitrant owner to deal with the issue than, than the number of dogs issue. So, and, so I'm not inclined to do anything with this. I think it's working okay as is, and I'm not inclined to change anything.
Yes, Chris?
If we wanted to continue the conversation, and this is in keeping with what I'm hearing, perhaps a more fruitful conversation would be around enforcement of nuisance with regard to dogs. I agree. I don't know, I don't think the number of dogs is really the focus of what we should be talking about, but perhaps looking at either enhancing, modifying, supporting, whatever, around the notion of nuisance dogs. And I think that could actually be a fruitful conversation. So if we were going to bring this back, maybe that might be the context to talk about it.
Andrew?
Yeah, I agree with Chris, and I appreciate you guys bringing this forward and that we have such a short period of time, and I'd be interested in having more information if people were interested. And I do appreciate the fact that there is an opportunity to mail this letter to our neighbors, because I know a lot of times, you know, in my neighborhood, I see dogs that aren't well-behaved, and I don't know where they live, so it'd be kind of hard to track them down. But the houses that do have dogs that are misbehaving, this is perfect, because I know people are sometimes not real comfortable complaining about their neighbors' animals. And so, and I like, I, you know, I'm, I'm okay with keeping it at three, with a, fostering a dog for six months would be okay, and I think that it's behavior, not necessarily the amount of animals that people aren't happy with.
Betty?
I'd rather discuss noises in general. There are noises that are much more objectionable.
Oh, remember the fireworks?
Like power tools.
I was going to say blow dryer. Leaf blower.
Any noise that, and, and my neighbors who, it's not any neighbors that live there all the time, but student housing, just noises can be a real nuisance. And I don't think that the number of dogs is anything we need to be concerned about. Noise is, noise is something that interferes with the quality of life a great deal.
George?
Well, and again, back to the reason why I brought this up, is the complaint that was brought to my attention wasn't so much necessarily the noise as it was the nuisance, the damage being done by the dogs to neighboring fences, the-
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the odors left from the dog feces, et cetera. So like Chris said, you know, we could probably discuss this some further, but I think it's more of, not necessarily enforcing just the barking ordinance, but maybe getting into more of the, the health issues and, and maybe trying to work up some other different way to work out complaints between neighbors that can't resolve it between themselves.
So did you say in your previous comments where people can get the letter?
When they do submit a complaint, Lane County Animal Services sends it out.
Okay. Okay.
Also, I think EPD can send that out.
So, if someone needs, that's the place to call to get this-
Right. City manager also sends that out.
Through the public service.
Through the public service.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if you still have somebody else in the queue.
I've got Alan, but-
Okay. I was just going to try to get a little bit of clarification if we come back. So, if, if there's not a big desire to change the number of dogs, it would be helpful for me to know, do you want to have a work session on how we enforce nuisances, or would it be helpful for us to provide you with a memo of what we're doing, what access people have, and then you can decide whether you want to have a next poll for a work session?
I suggest you do a memo, and then people follow up if they, if they need more information.
Okay.
That works.
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to suggest a work session on nuisance enforcement and the noise ordinance, and what issues there are, and ways of strengthening some provisions, because the things I hear about most are around those two things. How do we, how do we deal with nuisances? And can we strengthen those? And how, and how do we deal with noise? And can we strengthen provisions of those? So, I think that would be a good idea to have a work session. Does anybody disagree with having a work session?